Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the July eighth committee, the whole meeting. I'd like to acknowledge the traditional territories of our friends and neighbors at Fort Nelson First Nation, as well as the Prophet River First Nation. I'd like to celebrate and honor the treaty between Canada and the three D eight nations. And recognize and acknowledge the rights that are contained within that. I'd also like to recognize and acknowledge the contributions and enduring presence of the Métis people in our region. So please be advised tonight's meeting is available for the public to attend virtually as being streamed and recorded. Are there any council additions to to the committee hall? No? Okay. Is there any public comment, anybody online wishes? No? Okay. Everybody's okay with the agenda the way it is? Good. All right, we have a petition. Paul and Sunderland from Kerwood, Lydell. Going to talk to us about sustainable and resilient service deliveries. Is he here? Perfect. Hello, welcome.
Hello, thank you.
Uh, is there any staff to introduce him or?
I can, yeah, just to give you a bit of background, sure, because some of you as council, if you knew councillors haven't had an opportunity to meet Colin, we've worked with Kerwood Lydell and Paul specifically for a number of years. They were successful proponents years ago when we were rolling out our asset management program and were heavily involved in while training this organization, me included, at the time and providing lots of guidance and support through that process in turn and whatnot. Colin also represents the management committee, one of the representatives for us on the management committee for the IDCA committee. And has worked a significant amount of time through the past years, helping us with our annual infrastructure development plan, so the AIDP document that's presented to the province each October. And then just, well, last week, week before last, June 30th, we had to submit our progress report. We've transitioned to having that work done now internally, but they still provide lots of guidance and work because it's just because that outlines the five, the one, the five to 10, the 20 year plan. And heavily involved and have an understanding of our our infrastructure, the history behind it and whatnot, because it's part of building our asset manager program, that was all part of it. So lots of knowledge. The intent tonight is to start off with the service level discussion. It's something that's been broached previously, previous council. At the time, didn't have much of an appetite, quite honestly, to progress with having a real understand where the gaps were in terms of services versus the revenues required to provide those services. And it's really important as as council, as an organization that you and that we all understand that. It goes down to that simple question, what services do you want to provide? And how much are you willing to pay for it? And how do you want to pay for it? Because in many cases, there's different mechanisms and how that's funded. And so, so this is not a one and done discussion tonight. This is a bit of a icebreaker tonight to kind of discuss what this is going to look like moving forward. Talk about, you know, how status quo isn't, isn't an option, meaning it's fine if you status quo with with your service levels with status quo in terms of how you fund them is not because we'll essentially, especially when it comes to assets and how we fund our assets, those contributions annually that we provide aren't, we will end up underfunding programs. And then, and at some point in time, we hit, we hit a crossroads or we don't have the funds to actually continue providing the service and maintain an asset. So so the intent is to be forward looking. Part of the program too, moving into this year and next year is, is to really start, you know, flushing out those service levels. What internal service levels we provide to each other as an organization, from a staff perspective, from an operational perspective. That helps guide discussions around roles and responsibilities internally, required structure, all of that stuff, things that we're already working towards so that we have a really true understanding of how the organization needs to operate and be structured to provide the services. But first and foremost, we have to understand what services council wants to provide and also what the cost are to provide them. And it's not just operational services, it's also mean, all the discussion today is around maintaining the assets that provide those services, the water, the sewer, the airport infrastructure, roads and water. So so Colin, this is Kerwood Lydell, and I'll probably ask council if they wish to go around and do a bit of an intro, if you'd like.
Start with mayor, I'll just take it, sorry. I'm Rob Fraser, I'm the mayor, and thank you for that because I was I was a little confused by the presentation because I wasn't sure who this was, is a new group that we're working with or I hadn't seen anything, right? Come across my desk for, for a new project or something. So you and I had been talking about asset management plan and what the service levels look like. And I've been involved in tailor in a service level review for a little different reason. We were looking at a restructure. And so what are the services and what are the resources that you need to put into those services to prepare for the restructure that you want to do? So I am kind of familiar and the presentation is making a little more sense to me. I'm wondering why is this new folk talking to us about the IDCA? Isn't that an internal thing to us? So it started to come together better for me now. So my thought. Counselor Dicky?
Nice to meet you. I'm councillor.
It's nice to meet you. I'm Lesley Dickey, newly elected councillor in October 2022.
John Roper, municipal councillor.
Danny Souls, good to meet you again.
Yes.
And councillor Brenda Knox, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all. And thank you Scott for the introduction. And I'm going to now attempt to share a PowerPoint on my screen should come up in a moment. Are you all able to see my, it looks like a nice picture of the Moscow River? Yep. Great. So here, I'll jump right into it. So the intent of this presentation, I'm going to try and sort of circle through some material fairly briefly. I'm happy to take your questions as they come up, but I might not see everybody waving. So Scott, if you want to sort of direct traffic maybe for me, and if somebody's got a question there, their hand up, just jump in. The intent of this is, is to talk a little bit about the sort of the work that K W L has been doing, I've been doing with NRM, as Scott acknowledged over the course of the last 10 years, some of a bit of background on NRM's asset management program or system, which we began working with NRM to develop in 2013. And has evolved over the years. And I think we've really sort of, well, I want to first acknowledge that NRM has really been very much at the forefront of asset management practice in B C. And sort of also been leading in many other ways in Canada's asset management community. So you're you're despite the relatively small size of the community, you have an outsized influence in in asset management practice. I'll talk a little bit about that because the, some of this discussion is about how asset management practice has evolved to talk more about services and service delivery and less about assets over time. And again, sort of acknowledge some of the comments that have already been made that focusing on understanding the levels of service and understanding what goes into delivering those, not only in terms of infrastructure, but in terms of operating costs, human resources and so on, is really becoming a much more important part of the conversation. So the intent of the discussion today is, and I do hope that we have an opportunity to to make this a sort of collaborative discussion, not just a presentation, is to really understand what we mean by sustainable and resilient service delivery. And to look at the sort of the context for NRM's approach as it's evolved over about the last dozen years, 10 years. The importance of NRM's sort of unique standing as a regional municipality in B C and the history of that, sort of how that plays into the delivery of services and the recovery of costs for services. Policies and practices for asset management and delivery of infrastructure services to the region. The important role of the council in establishing bylaws, exercising the fiduciary duties of NRM and managing risks, among other things. We'll discuss some of the key challenges that face NRM. And we'll definitely be talking, I know that you face some very real challenges. You know, sort of in an acute way over the course of the past a couple of months, you've had a difficult and stressful beginning to your summer. We're going to sort of look at the much larger picture. Recognizing that, you know, wildfire and some of these other threats that face the municipality on a day to day basis are every bit as important as the longer term, slower moving challenges, but we want to put all of those things in context. So we'll be looking big picture in long view in this conversation. And then considering finally, how we might evolve some of your existing frameworks for infrastructure service delivery and your asset management policy as an example into something of a strategic statement on infrastructure. And so had a lot of discussion with Scott and the leadership team on staff about what that might mean. And I think it's, Scott is interested in hearing your, some of your concepts on that, comments back on that today. And then finally, where do we go in terms of some next steps? So sustainable and resilient service delivery, the picture that I've got here is the Asset Management B C Sustainable Service Delivery Framework, which is familiar to those in the asset management community in the province and something that has been sort of top of mind since it was introduced early on in NRM's asset management journey. And one of the things that's important about it is that it represents a cycle where it's sort of like a plan, do, check, act cycle, if you're familiar with that. And the idea with this is, is to illustrate continuous improvement. That we're on a journey and every local government across Canada is on a journey of understanding sort of what the issues or threats are that face the organization, understanding what the priorities are and planning, implementing a plan and assessing and kind of continuously going through that cycle. And in doing that, we're sort of trying to balance three main things. One is that we've got revenue levels that are established to recover full life cycle costs that we're effectively managing risks and that we're delivering services at levels that are appropriate for the needs of the community. So again, sort of some context, and I presume that this is probably familiar to everybody in room. But NRM is the only regional municipality in B C. It is a unique order of local government that was created by the merger of the town of Fort Nelson and the Northern Rockies Regional District in 2009. And the purpose of that merger really was to address, primarily was to address rural industrial taxation issues. I would say, based on my knowledge, that it's been partially successful. It's not, there are still some nagging issues in that area, but that it fundamentally achieved the purpose of enabling or providing taxation authority to your government for providing sort of community type services or municipal type services to an area that has an economic base, which is largely rural and industrial. In 2013, the province and Northern Rockies assigned the IDCA, the Infrastructure Development Agreement, which aimed to return some of the benefits that the province receives from that rural economy, economic activity in an area and back to the municipality. So that was, the agreement was based on a business case which established or identified more than $420 million in 2011 or so dollars, which is significant of capital needs over a 20 year period. And a lot of those dollars were aimed at providing sort of a solid base of municipal type infrastructure for the community that you have today. But a lot of it was also predicated on the expectation of high growth. And that's really important in terms of the context of sort of 10 or a dozen years ago, that has changed fundamentally for NRM. So sustainability and resiliency were important questions early on in the implementation of the IDCA. One of the things that the management committee, the IDCA management committee identified as a need and the province identified as a need for implementing the IDCA after the agreement was signed, was that there was a need to understand what the risks are associated with that $420 million capital program. And in doing so, identified an independent consultant, MMK consulting, which works jointly for the province in NRM on a risk review of the IDCA capital program. That review was done in 2014. And one of the things that I find really interesting about it is that of all of the major risks that were identified in that review, basically every single one of them has materialized. So you've had to adapt, you've had to really implement that whole risk management program over that sort of 10 year period, the first, the first 10 years of the IDCA. And so some of the, 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 the risk scenarios or sensitivity assumptions that were built into that analysis were that you know, funding was, was not going to be, the IDCA funding could be reduced as a result of the performance framework, which it was. Capital expenditures may exceed the planned expenditures in the program. In other words, cost overruns or inflation, we've certainly seen that. And to a greater degree than expected in the plan and risk, risk analysis. Same thing with interest rates, interest rates, of course, have gone way up. And there was also a scenario of looking at no real growth in assessments because that plan was really predicated on a high rate of growth. And of course, that lack of growth has also materialized as a result of economic conditions changing that we were sort of aware of in 2014 when this was, was happening. Oops, pardon me. So significantly, NRM has very successfully weathered all of those changes by implementing all of the the adaptation strategies in the risk framework for the IDCA. One of the other things that was developed in the early days, this is a 2016 version of it, but we initially sort of worked to develop this with staff in 2013, 2014. This was the asset management framework that NRM adopted. It's actually very, very similar to the, the ISO International Asset Management Standard Framework. So it's very heavily influenced by that. But the idea with it really is that there's a line of sight from the community through council to senior management and staff for establishing the needs for managing infrastructure services, policies and strategies, which are the purview of council and senior management. And then down through the asset management system and asset management plans, which are implemented by staff. And the real change in this that happened in 2016 was we added a whole bunch more asset management plans that weren't in the original framework. So that essentially now, all of NRM's infrastructure services have an asset management plan. We were sort of doing some brainstorming and developing the, this presentation and sort of thinking about what we mean by sustainable, resilient service delivery. And that's myself and senior staff, looking at sort of what, what, what really is shaping the direction that we want to go, recognizing that you know, we want to sort of show asset management more as part of the process of business of sustainably and resiliently delivering services. Recognizing that those relationships between staff, council and community are still very important. And then really focusing quite a bit on the roles of council and staff. And so, you know, in terms of sort of key roles of council, establishing levels of service, establishing budgets and tax and fee levels that recover costs associated with delivering those services. Providing direction on how risks are treated. So prioritization of risks and risk, risk management. And then taking overall responsibility for financial stewardship or fiduciary stewardship of the municipality. Senior staff and council collaborate very much hands on on the the ongoing practices of risk management and strategic planning. And then by and large, other things that are delegated to staff include implementation of the annual plan, delivering services, managing day to day financial affairs of the municipality, preparing evidence for making decisions so that council is well supported in decision processes and master planning, which really is taking a long view of plans for the delivery of services, particularly infrastructure services that have those long lived assets and require taking a long view in a plan. So levels of service. One of the key things in terms of sustainable service delivery is understanding what is an appropriate level of service, what services does the municipality provide? And how can we articulate in terms that are both clear and meaningful to the users of services? So in plain language for community members, but also useful for the purpose of managing the services, so the day to day role of staff and ensuring that those service levels are being met. How do we articulate those things? So I've got an example here for your wastewater service for the parameter of reliability. And reliability is one of the characteristics or parameters that we want to make sure we've got clear set levels of service established for. So generally, when we're concerned about reliability of the service like wastewater, we're concerned about how well does it do when it's under maximum stress? And that happens when it rains hard or when you have rain on snow events and there's a lot of water that needs to be conveyed through the collection system and treatment and ultimately deliver it to the Moscow River in compliance with your environmental standards, your regulatory standards for discharge. So all of those things need to happen in order for the service to be reliable. And then we really talk about, well, what can go wrong? How often does it go wrong? What are the consequences? And are they acceptable? So generally, when we're thinking about wastewater service, we'll be thinking about things like, does it back up into somebody's basement? Do we ever have surcharging that causes a spill onto the ground or something like that? And then are we able to maintain the performance of the treatment system when it's under maximum stress? So that we're not causing an adverse impact to the Moscow River? Or going out of compliance with your discharge permit? All of those things come into reliability. Staff has a lot of things to think about. But ultimately, what matters to the public is usually when I flush my toilet, does everything work properly? Major capital investments have been made in the wastewater system over the course of the last 10 years in order to ensure that some of these things are working properly and that your wastewater system will continue to be reliable for some time to come. But there's also ongoing work that needs to be done on operation, maintenance and asset renewal. So things like flushing and inspection to sewers, managing inflow and infiltration that those you know, water getting in, clean water getting into the sewer that, that potentially causes problems in wet weather. And then managing some certain pollutants of concern at the source. Those are all things that are ongoing efforts to ensure that the wastewater system is reliable. Another major element of managing infrastructure services is risk management. And when we think about risk management in simple terms, we really think about what can go wrong? How often could it happen? And what are the consequences of that thing happening? So likelihood times consequence equals risk is the sort of simple formula that we, we concern ourselves with. When we're doing design and construction work, some of the considerations that go into managing risks include thinking about what, you know, how big does, does the asset need to be? What material is going to be best? And what is it going to cost? In operation and maintenance, if we're thinking about, for example, a storm sewer like showing here or a culvert, is it clear debris? Is it structurally sound? So we want to sort of do some inspection to ensure that things are operating the right way and then deal with repairs when they need to be made. What are the consequences if, if a culvert, for example, surcharges or collapses or washes out? So, you know, a culvert that is in an area that if it floods upstream, there's nothing but, you know, a field or even a road that's impacted, that might not be a concern. But if it's, you know, town square or the recreation complex or the hospital, then we've got a much larger concern. Or a large area of residential development. So it really does depend on the location. We think about risk associated with a lot of your infrastructure services. And then, you know, one of the things we want to consider is, well, what can we do to make an asset like a culvert resilient? And that might mean in the face of, you know, deterioration over time, climate change, growth and development and impacts on on watersheds. So we put all of these things together when we're doing asset management planning or master planning. When we're considering sort of what the long term needs are for an infrastructure system or a service. And so we consider levels of service, we might consider gaps or issues with performance of assets and meeting desired or target levels of service. We look at the condition of assets, what does that tell us about levels of service and risks? And then we'll go through an optimization process where we try to essentially identify strategies that will address multiple issues at once in a way that's most cost effective. So maybe doing a little bit of business case analysis or comparative cost analysis and different options. And then we try and sort of distill that down into a forecast for the cost of providing the service in the long run. Again, when we're dealing with a lot of the services that municipalities provide, they require a lot of infrastructure, which has a long lifecycle. So we need to look out in time and I'll show you some examples of that as we get into it. Oh, I apologize. And all of this gets to a budget recommendation that incorporates some of those longer term considerations. So this next slide shows your 2024 budget in graphical terms. And sort of the revenue on the left side, the expenditures on the right side, balancing out, which is what we would expect to see. And that's a requirement for local governments in B C to present a balanced budget. One of the, some of the kind of the key elements of this is departmental operating expenses at the bottom in sort of that royal blue color. Revenues and expenditures. So revenues that are directly against operating expenses would be things like utility revenues. A big portion of your tax revenue is at the, the top of the revenue column, which is your municipal tax levy. And then you've got some other revenue sources in between. The biggest one in 2024 happens to be a transfer prior year revenues or transfers out of reserve funds, which is sort of an internal transfer. But there's also the IDCA and then some other, other grants that come that come into the picture from sort of application based grant programs and other such things. You know, every, every few years, they get a grant through the ACAP program for the airport is another example. The, on the, on the expense side, the big, the biggest piece of the expenses is departmental operating costs. Capital and asset renewal is the next largest piece in dark blue. And then above that, you've got the biggest piece from there is a transfer to reserves. So you see some money flowing out of reserves or prior year revenues and some money flowing into reserve funds in every year. And one of the reasons for that is that you're using reserve funds to to balance year to year costs, particularly on your capital program for asset renewal and other major investment needs. So let's take a look at that sort of expenditure, at least the renewal part of that expenditure chart and forecast it out for 100 years. This is not entirely a hypothetical exercise, but I do want to emphasize that after about the first 20 years, it is based on a lot of assumptions and a lot of very long range forecasts for asset renewal. So don't get too hung up on sort of what happens in one year versus another. The, you know, the, the year to year variation is very difficult to predict, but the overall amounts of investment that are needed on sort of a decade to decade basis are reasonably realistic because you've got things to consider like buildings that need to be replaced over this hundred year timeframe. You've got things like water mains and sewers and roads that need to be replaced. And each of those things is a major expenditure when it comes. The good news is a lot of those things, because much of your infrastructure is in good condition and it's still relatively early in its lifecycle. A lot of those big expenditures don't, don't start to really land until at least 30 years out. I'll jump to the next slide. And so what does that look like when we start looking at it against sort of your current revenue level if we just assume, now this is sort of ignoring time value of money, but to put it in simple terms, if we assumed that we increased revenues to keep pace just with inflation. So this is what, this is what things would look like. And so the, the good news right off the bat with this, and I think this really is a testament to the good planning that NRM has been doing over the last number of years. That over the, over the next 30 years or so, you're able to balance in a very sort of sustainable way, year to year, maintaining a, a good balance in reserve funds and ensuring that all of your capital needs are funded. And so, you know, just assuming that again, your revenue level stays, stayed stable in real terms and your expenditures stay stable, you're, you're able to keep up with all of your asset renewal needs. And then what starts to happen in, you know, about 30 years out is some of those major expenditures for things like sewers and water mains and sort of major buildings that are relatively new, like the rec complex, we start to see some major renewals that are needed in those in those areas. And, and your current revenue levels aren't quite able to keep up. So that translates into about a $2 million a year. So that translates into about a two million dollar a year, a year shortfall over a hundred year lifespan. Uh, again, this is a bit of crystal ball gazing, but it is important to sort of recognize that sort of very long term, um, long term view. So shifting from sort of that, uh, sense of where we are, uh, to where we want to be. Um, I grabbed a couple of, of pieces of N R M's asset management policy, which was first adopted in twenty fifteen. By council and updated in twenty eighteen. Um, I'll just sort of focus in a little bit on some keywords here. Um, your vision is to be responsive to the needs of residents, uh, encouraging active public involvement. And balancing cultural, environmental and economic needs, uh, in a way that's collaborative and transparent. Um, and then with respect to the delivery of services. Um, assets will reliably meet expected service levels and will be managed to the benefit of present and future users. So that's a nice, clear, concise, um, overarching policy vision. Um, which is also, uh, probably similar to other local governments in B C. Because your asset management policy was inspired by, uh, a, a sort of a, uh, policy template that the province had. Uh, had provided, uh, oh, fifteen years ago. Um, so just rounding things out, I wanted to acknowledge that this is sort of the first of, of many discussions. That, um, uh, Scott and staff are expecting to have with you with respect to, uh, different asset categories. So sort of drilling down on, on what sustainability and resilience mean, uh, for different, uh, services. Um, uh, considering maybe a fresh vision for sustainable and resilient service delivery, something of an update on the asset management policy. Um, and then considering, uh, revenue needs and strategies for, uh, individual services and for the municipalities. Um, some next steps that would come from that. So looking at the state of each individual service. Uh, identifying specific needs and actions where needed. Uh, prioritizing annual budget tax and user charge rates to fund, uh, the, the overarching program. Again, uh, taking the very long view because things look pretty healthy in the short term. And then looking at levels of service for all departments and services. That's where I'll pause or I'll stop, I should say, and maybe bounce it back to you, Scott, to direct questions.
Thanks, thanks Colin.
So as I was said earlier, this is just a bit of an icebreaker. This is a fairly, this is an death process to go through with council and the staff. The intent is, once we get rolling into a lot of the discussions in the future is, is it helps, it helps, uh, us, uh. Developer support structure and how to provide as, as the mayor mentioned, what the, the activity took, uh, when they were in Taylor. And similarly, um, it helps, uh, the intent is so that this council understands the services that are provided, what those costs are and then how we. How do we fund them? And it's about sustainable service delivery and understanding what the impacts of what influence that. So. So this is more of that, today was just more of a, kind of a, um, the intent was we had, this was going to get delivered in Maine. Of course, we got distracted a little bit, we may. Um, so we still want to move on. This was a two top, two thousand and twenty four budget item. Uh, to, uh, to start working through this and evaluating those services and to update those services. I'll just, uh, throw it, uh, your way, Mayor, just to see if you have any questions or comments.
Sure. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was good. Added some context into what I was thinking before. Um, remind me, Scott, just because we don't look at the asset management plan all the time as a council. Where we're at. So we've, we've identified the assets. Have we gone as far as identifying a life, the life, like, uh, are we at that level? Where all the life cycle or the expected lifespan, I guess, of, of all the assets has been identified?
Yes, yes, the only, the only one that's a little, uh, that's not where we, well, that needs a little bit more work, obviously, than the buildings and facilities side. And it's more around framing that one out, but, but, but when it comes to roads, water, sewer, uh, specifically our, uh. Our, 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 our mobile equipment, um, all the assets have been, have been identified. They've been inventoried, they've been assessed or, or from a, from a condition assessment perspective. Um, and that's when, and, and, and a determination in terms of life expectancy and cost to, to replace. What's time for renewal as part of that is understanding what, uh, based on, because what we're seeing in budgets from a budget perspective is. You know, what the projections are starting to be a little off because of inflationary measures and whatnot. But in regards to the, the life cycle component of an asset management program, that's, that's for the most part been done. That's, and that's when, when you look at your budget item, Mayor, when you look at the budgets, um, the contribution to each of the various assets areas. Has been determined based on averaging out what the cost would be from a replacement or renewal perspective. And that's where we have those annualized contributions to the program that helps smooth out the peaks and valleys of the program.
Right. So you've looked at it, or staff have looked at it from the perspective of, um, replacement. Have you started looking at it from the perspective of the service level and? How the service level might be impacted and when the service level might be impacted. Based on the deterioration of the asset, regardless of which department. So are we that far along?
We have, yeah. So we, we've, we've, we've gone through both. That's part of this process also because, because, so, so I'll, I'll, I'll pick on roads. Roads is a good one because water and sewer typically, I mean, um. People want to be able to turn the water on, they get fresh potable water and they want to be able to flush their toilet and it, well, it goes to this sewer treatment plant. So, so not a whole lot of room when it comes to, uh, risk because the consequence could be significant, right? But when you look at, uh, roads is a good one, when the asset management program was originally presented, uh, and to that process. There was a service level defined in the roads and, and, and I'm going to pick my brain right here now and from a memory perspective, but, but. On a scale of one to ten, our roads at the time, I believe, were about, were like seven point eight and we acknowledged in terms of condition. And, and outline with council, if we maintain the roads at an existing level, when we demonstrate that this is what a road would look like if it's a nine. Is what our road looks like if it's a five and failing and whatnot. And to, to continue the service level, this is a contribution to the roads program. To maintain that service level, which at the time was one point five million dollars annually. And, uh, an additional two hundred thousand dollars, that's for, for, I'll call it paved roads and two hundred thousand dollars for, for sidewalks. And then another half a million or five hundred thousand dollars for any of the gravel roads. So, so total of two point two million dollars. That two point two million dollars doesn't go as far as it did when we originally looked at it. So now the decisions and as part of this process would be, if we maintain existing service level, there's only one option, the contribution to that. Service must increase to, to, to make up for the difference in cost to provide that service, which from a asset perspective is, is around the inflationary measures. Or you could reduce the service level, basically allow the roads to deteriorate a little bit more and put up with more the odd pothole or whatnot. So you reduce that service level or a combination of both is, which is, you know.
Well, and then, and then, I mean, it's, I see it as part of our role is to set priority for that as well. So you've picked roads. But, you know, from a road perspective, the public might be fine driving through the odd pothole. But if their toilet doesn't flush one time, it's a problem. So to me, it becomes a higher priority potentially with respect to how the money in the long term.
Absolutely.
So, right, so we've got to have that discussion.
Absolutely, that's part of it, yeah, yeah, because, because, because originally it was around the fact that there's a level. We, storm sewer is, is a good example. We talked about storm sewer. We made a decision based on discussions with council at the time that we would, we would, we would, uh, and storm sewers or culverts. Uh, underground storm and whatnot to do with drainage. We allowed a higher level of risk because failure depended on the area. Wasn't, the consequence of that failure wasn't significant, right? So, 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 uh, some of the, some of the culverts we, we know are undersized in the industrial area here. Um, significant amount of cost to upgrade all those, all those, uh, uh, culverts. To deal with a one in one hundred year storm event or one in two hundred year storm event, um. The risk is that you're either A going to. Uh, that, that culvert's not going to be able to keep up in a significant rain event and it's going to breach the road. Worst case, now you're going to wash out, we wash out the protective section of road. But if there's no public damage in terms of private property or whatnot, that might be an acceptable risk based on spending the. Extraordinary amount of money to replace all those culverts at once and you flag the priority or so, for instance. Landfill Road, we did the culverts there because there was a higher risk to, to, to the public infrastructure, right? So, so you're making that determination also from a risk versus consequence perspective. Yeah. Because you can't do it all. So, so we prioritize within the asset and then, of course, we also prioritize the asset. So, so to your point. Significant amount of time and resources from a priority perspective goes into water and sewer, just because the consequence is more extreme, right? You can't, we, we can't allow boil water advisories, for example, or.
And the service, the service level expectation of the public is higher.
It's much higher, yeah, yeah. Similar with roads. The roads are broken out into various types of roads. If it's an arterial collector, side road, just a, uh, or a, or a, uh. A local traffic road. So again, that determines then to the type of, the type of, uh, service level within that system too.
Yeah, because some of the arterials are more important than others, obviously, going up the hospital, the fire department. Your road contractor, the road get, you know, he's got to get his equipment out of there to be able to deal with whatever's happening with the road. So those start to. They start to set your priority.
Exactly. And that also, so then that's from the asset perspective, but that also drives out our operational levels and services then. Because we don't plow them all equally, for example. We, we plow the hills and hospital hill and bus routes. Much quicker from a response perspective than we do a local road. Sidewalks are the same way, right? So, so that's, and then, and this is all part of this discussion as we move forward. Like I said, it's not a one and done. It's not going to be completed and all and by the end of this year, it's going to be, it's, it's a continuous improvement approach, but it's going to tick the boxes as we go along.
Bill, have you thought about how, how you're going to involve us? Is, is this something you want to do in its entirety first and then? And then bring us in, or is it something that you want sort of each department to make presentations to us as, as you go or?
We've been a combination of both. So it's, so the intent is not to go through this whole process and. Because council, the intent is to go through a little process, new presentation. We're doing a combination of both. Some, some things will be done in parallel. Part of this process is also in the background as we're working with each individual department so that there's a, there's, there's a clear understanding of what. Each department, how they, how they participate or what their involvement is in the service levels they provide. Because each department has a different role to play depending on the stage of this. I, I, I use sidewalks example, putting the sidewalk in. The planning department determines whether the sidewalk is not public works. But when it's time to put that sidewalk in or, or determine, say, if there's a single sidewalk on one side of the road it goes in, then that's a public works discussion also. Because they might want it on one side versus the other from an operational perspective in terms of snow or move on storage. When it comes time to put the sidewalk in and install it, the planning department has that responsibility over the public works. So it's understanding those roles and responsibilities. So that's going to be happening in the background as things are occurring. We've already had discussions with the various departments. And working through that piece to break down how they provide the services, but it's also important as we go through this to have council involved. This is why we wanted to do the initial, I'll call it icebreaker discussion to say, this is what's going to be occurring coming forward. There'll be, there'll be more discussions, future discussions and involvement with council because we can't determine what that end service level is unless you're part of the discussion.
Yeah, from, from my perspective, I'd, I'd rather see it in small bits. Because there's so much, it's so big.
Then we wrap.
Every department can be so big, right? If, when you start getting into risk and prioritization, service level, that if it all comes at once, it's, it's too overwhelming and it's.
We can't do it that way. Yeah, then there's no intent to do it that way. It'll be, it'll, it'll, it'll be, it'll be pieces of it. And then at the end, we've, the puzzle gets put together and we do a summary with council too, as part of, as part of the process. Because this, there's going to be things we're talking with council in regards to the services at the rec center in terms of how we provide those services, what those costs are. How do you want to, I mean, because it all comes into, into the fee structure, right? What's this council's priority, right? Previous councils and this council's priority in many cases has been affordability at the rec center, which, but, but you have to have an understanding what that. What the cost to provide the service to the rec center is and what the gap is to, uh, from a revenue perspective. And then how do you want to fill that gap? Right? And, and, and right now, we generally fill the gap through general taxation, right? Um, and, and in many cases.
Rather than fees.
Rather than fees, exactly. The, the fee structure, uh, doesn't come, and, and no rec center does, but, but some councils. And again, this is again, a future discussion for this council. Some organizations that, that the councils say, this is the line we want in terms of cost provided service versus the revenues we receive. Through, um, service fees, uh, rentals, whatnot. This is the percentage we want to hover around and this is, and that's a key performance indicator, right? We haven't had that discussion. That's never been a, that's never been a, uh, discussion that, that, that's occurred between staff and council besides. Having a, a general understanding that council's not looking at recouping up, uh, a significant amount of fees. Or, or, or costs through fees. It's been typically to general taxation.
For recreation.
For recreation. Landfill's been the same way. That is an example. It's another example.
But utilities might be something different.
Utilities or something could be, exactly, yeah. So those, those are the discussions that we need to have with council and you're right. Trying to do it all at once is overwhelming. It's little pieces at a time to get under the hood of each area and, and be part of those discussions and, and. And, uh, first is having, for the most part, council understand what that looks like and break out, this is the cost to provide it. And then look at what are all the influencing factors. We're, we're in a very unique situation as a, as an organization that. That a lot of the services that are provided within the community are funded through taxation, but the majority of this through industrial taxation. Right? Which a lot of communities don't have that. I'll call it that luxury, right? Because the general, the general taxpayer, that's the residential taxpayer. Isn't necessarily impacted by those decisions compared to, uh, a lot of organizations, right?
Okay, my brain is exhausted. Is there anybody else got any questions?
I have a question for Colin is, um, so when we talk about asset management and, uh, human capital. Our staff are our greatest assets, those types of questions. How does that fit into this plan? Because when you talk about service delivery, the cost of staff, the retirement. Age of staff, are we accounting for that in here or is that a different program?
That's part of this, sorry, sorry, Colin.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, uh, it's, it's part of it because that's, that's the reason why we're bringing the department heads and staff as part of these. So each department's actually going to have their own involvement individually as part of this in terms of funding. Collectively as a group and also individually as, as various departments in terms of how you provide the service, because then you step back and say, okay. Do we have the resources to provide the service? Where are those gaps, right? I mean, and it's a conversation I intend to have with council before the summer's out around, around what we're up against over the next coming, uh, months. The next couple of years with some potential retirements in the works. How do we ensure we have a seamless transition, ensure we have that capacity, especially given what we've just gone through, what we're currently going through. And our E O C is still activated, for example. So, so there's a lot of things occurring. We took five months out of last calendar year. We're going to probably do the same again this year. We have a, um, we have a, uh, uh. After action review coming up on the twenty second of this month, which is going to drive out a bunch of actions. That takes capacity from other areas. So if we want to, it, it, it has a potential to, uh, from a sustainability perspective, to impact service levels in the future. Because you can, you know, do that hard burn initially, but at some point you got to look at how is that consistently. We applied from a sustainable perspective. So it needs to be part of the discussion because there's no sense to say to council, this is where the service level is, this is the cost provided. If we're not recognizing the human assets that are required to provide them and what may be influencing them or impact them in the future. Especially when you look at the retirements and, and whatnot, absences, turnover and how that, you know. Someone who's been here for five, ten, fifteen years, twenty years, when they take that away from them. As much as we try to document what's, what's there, there's a lot up in the, up here too, right? So that needs to be part of the discussion.
Colin, did you have anything to add there?
I don't think so. I think, uh, maybe just that, um, you know, one of the shifts from talking about asset management. To talking about sustainable and resilient service delivery is to recognize that, um, you know, talking about assets is not everything we need to think about. When we're talking about delivering services and, um, you know, it's well said that human resources are, uh. Probably the most important part of delivering, uh, any of these services. And, um, and so, you know, as we're considering, um, all of the elements that go into delivering a service. Uh, talking about how, uh, you know, ongoing operation and maintenance is done, how the internal services that are provided around things like. Finance and planning and human resources itself, um, are, are incorporated in all of those. Sort of end user facing services. When you think about water service or wastewater service or plowing snow. Uh, there's a whole lot that needs to happen behind the scenes and that, that's all relying on the staff structure, the organization working, working properly and seamlessly.
Okay, go ahead. I was, I was going to say that the sustainable resilient service levels, that, 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 that phrase is, is purposeful, right? Like, we didn't want to say this is asset management and, and, and maintaining service levels. It was, is, it was being, you know, provided them from a sustainable perspective and being resilient, which resiliency is, you know, navigating through the tough times, right? And being able to overcome various obstacles and whatnot and still maintain those services. So to do that, um, we, we absolutely will be looking at. So to do that, we, we absolutely will be looking at how those services are provided internally also.
Including how to pay for them.
Including how to pay for them.
Because that's one of the obstacles of a shrinking economy.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anybody else? Questions?
I will comment. This is more a comment. I want to thank Colin for his continued involvement in this process. And I think back to the very early days of the beginning of the asset management discussions that we had here and how it's, it's really interesting to take a high level look, step away from the details of all the assets and look at take a high level look and realize that the province was really helpful to to us. We, we remember that we were left out of the old fair share agreement that took place in the peace. And that was, that caused us to really dig in in order to create a, like you say, how come we're left out? To create a direct connection. But in the work that was done here, we have a more direct connection to an actual asset management system than you ever had with the slush funds that showed up as the fair share agreement in the peace country. So what I find so fascinating about that is that and I, I've been at meetings at U B C M primarily where we've met together and some of us. And I find that the province actually has, really does have an interest in seeing this work and it's primarily because it's, it's very difficult for them to do it themselves. And so here you've got a municipality that actually, instead of you coming every day with your hat in your hand, asking for a little bit of funding for this or that, the other thing, you've got a structure in place that actually helps you build and monitor and maintain and, and project where you're going to be. And that I think that it's great that the province actually looks at it that way too. And so it's actually a palpable feeling when you're in those meetings to know that the province actually likes just to have, they like to have people like the Northern Rockies or groups like Northern Rockies that are actually being successful in what they're doing because it actually, you know, it leads them as well. It helps them move things forward as well. I wish, and just I'll add a wish list to this because it's very interesting that we have this on a service level from a municipal, an urban primarily, but rural roads and various things primarily focus from the province. If they would apply the same, if, if we had some mechanism as a region of applying the same focus on our forests, on our infrastructure in the wild as a, instead of a, like no man's land like it is now, we would have a different scenario from our industry point of view too. So the, the, I, I will caution us from thinking they, this, we're watching that our economy has shrunk continually for a long time. And we need to do everything that we can to be realizing that that too is in our, in our lane. In the same way as healthcare is not in our lane, but is in our lane. Industry is not in our lane, but it is in our lane in, from an influence point of view. And I, so asset management is such a useful tool. It is so useful. Applied, the broader that you can apply it in the municipality, the better off we have from a planning point of view for the future. Anyway, thanks again.
Thanks. Anybody else? Doesn't look like it. Colin, thank you very much for your, for your presentation and for the start of a stimulating conversation.
Pleasure to be with you today.
Alright, thank you. Okay. There were no additions. That takes us to the closed portion of the meeting. So if we can agree to go closed, then I think we'll recess. We'll have to pick that up because this is not a five minute conversation, this next report, I don't think. So we'll pick it up after the council, the regular council meeting. Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Alright, so then we agree to close? So we'll close the meeting. Okay. Okay, thank you. So we are finished the closed portion of the committee, the whole meeting. There is nothing to rise and report. So I will adjourn the regular committee, the whole meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.